I agree. In this. With the. Justice. For. Well, twelve. Yes.
Terry Behringer. Here. Paul Cuny.
Here.
Joel Latte.
Here.
Robert Laraway.
Here.
Brent Peavy.
Here.
Daryl Shannon.
Here.
Dave Torgerson.
Here.
Yay.
Have a full house. Okay, agenda's before you. There are no exceptions or corrections. Accepted by unanimous consent. And item four is the consent agenda, anything to be taken out and discussed?
Being none, I'll make the motion to accept.
Motion made by Laraway to accept the consent agenda as written, second.
I'll say.
Cuny. Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Give me a pleasure. To congratulate Jessica Manley. Who just graduated from CMU with their public nonprofit. Degree magna cum laude.
And.
The journey had. Somewhat enjoyed it, except for the music class.
Yes.
Okay. So that would be it for me. Mr. Manager.
Bear with me, it is allergy season, so if I sound like I'm. Hacking. As you were.
It's that.
Uh, in case you haven't seen Morning Sun or your email, the City Mount Pleasant, uh, State Commission has voted to give the okay for. Paul Laurie, their Director of Public Safety and their attorney to draft a coverage contract similar to the contract we had with the county. Um, they're optimistic that they would have it either at their second meeting this month or their first meeting at their first June meeting, maybe twice a month. So we would then be able to approve it at our June meeting. Uh, was hopefully an effective start date of July one, which matches our fiscal year. Uh, the city's been incredibly gracious and very willing to work together on this. Um, it's really been, uh, just a very beneficial and, you know, professional experience for both sides, I think, to, to go through this process, so. Uh, looking good in that area, in my opinion. Uh, ZDA met last night, they approved a side yard setback reduction on Marietta Street. Um, quick, simple, easy meeting, I think we're out in. Ten minutes, fifteen hours, sixteen hours, yeah. Real, real, simple, straightforward request. Um, the home was built, uh, in nineteen seventy-four, so, uh. Just a young fifty-one-year-old home in the village, which. Certainly, uh, is a factor in our ZDA's decision to say, you know, probably are, are okay for a variance. Earlier in April, we graded and brined our gravel road. We also brine Rollin Road, um, which is a county road, but we do have, um, residents up on shores. They were complaining about dust issues, um. The township brine program doesn't kick in, I think, until mid-May.
Which township is that?
Their Sherman out there.
Thank you.
It's just south of the river. Um, we said, yeah, we, we can get the county to grade it for us, we'll, we'll throw some brine down it, out it for you. We shot at the county and they were very, uh, amenable, they're like, yeah, we just need, you know, twenty-four hour notice to, to grade it and. Uh, so that was, uh. It was a good way to work together on that. Then we also had our traffic markings repainted, uh, in April, uh, we do that every year. And coincidentally, the day after, I got an email from PPG Pittsburgh Paint Group saying that, hey, tariffs are gonna make us raise paint prices later this year, so. Just so you know, um, so. Uh, we did get back from our attorney, uh, just the end of last week, the language for the city could petitions, um. That topic is gonna be addressed more in the newsletter that's going out, uh, shortly. Uh, newsletter's gonna go to the printer at the end of the week. Third typical newsletter we do in the spring to highlight fireworks and that kind of stuff, and we're also gonna do our fireworks mailing for donations. Uh, fireworks are Saturday, July fifth. Uh, so we will be getting donations hopefully to cover half of the show is typically what we go for. Uh, we did approve a new home permit for Peninsula Drive. I did have a meeting with MMDC a week or two ago, um, they are excited about our interest in potentially becoming members. I did meet in, uh, sign off on our property liability insurance renewal, uh, it's up like two hundred bucks from the last year. We do get, um, a dividend, a net asset distribution, so that offsets the cost somewhat. Last year was around, I think, twenty-three hundred dollars, give or take, and I think it's gonna be pretty close to that. Um, the way our insurance works is we're with the MMRMA, the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Association. And all their members are required to have a self-insured retention level. But for smaller municipalities like us, we join a state pool, so we share that, so we have a state pool. Contribution and then the actual insurance contribution. And I, I sit on the board for the state pool aspect of that and. Um, our net asset distribution, that the pool is giving out slightly less than last year, but when you factor in. Your loss history and how long you're, you've been in the MMRMA, I think they'll balance out, so it should be pretty close to what we got last year. Which for, we cover five million dollars in coverage is what we carry. You know, ten thousand dollars is a, a pretty reasonable insurance expense, in my opinion, for, for that type of exposure. Uh, we did add some cyanage in some reflective, uh, shoulder markings along El Camino Grande, um. For those of you who are here or frequent that side of the lake, we had a car. Missed the curve somehow. Down there and ended up in the front yard of the home and right by Isabella Vista. Uh, we added this sign and we added some reflective markings along the side of the road. And then, um. Guy Savin was able to secure his performance bond and we have, um, through the Lake Committee made the first payment for the river restoration project. Uh, we are looking to lock down a date for him to come, which would be the next meeting of the Lake Committee, we're gonna try and meet that tomorrow, but. Um, he hasn't. Confirmed his availability, so we're gonna wait till he can be here, cause that's really the next step in this process is questions and discussion with him, so. With that, that is all I have for you folks.
Any questions for Tim?
No, I just wanna thank Tim for all he's done, cause since I've been gone, you've got a lot accomplished and. Good job.
Thank you.
Especially with the Mount Pleasant Police Department.
That's cool.
And with getting their sheriffs. So. Oh, snap, that's, yeah, I'm glad we worked that out.
Well, you know, we helped, right?
Good.
All right. That was good. Yeah, you got me.
Hey, anybody, uh, any report from the LFPW, they send one or anything? Okay. Next of agenda, item number six, public hearing is proposed, proposed. Resolution two thousand twenty-five. Oh, five. Bloomfield Township Fire Protection. This every year. Okay. The public meeting is. Open. Seven oh eight. Cool.
Your first of your three public hearings tonight is for proposed resolution two thousand and twenty-five oh five, is the second of two resolutions annually adopted. To renew the Bloomfield Township Fire Protection Special Assessment District. This has been collected every year since the year two thousand. It is a one mil annual levy. Our Sherman Township residents pay one mil directly to Sherman Township. Our Bloomfield Township residents pay that to the village, to them pays Sherman Township. It is constitutionally prohibited from being a millage in this half of the village because the state constitution requires that taxes be levied. In a uniform manner across your jurisdiction, so since Sherman Township. Does the northern half township wide. Our Bloomfield Township half relies on us to do this through special assessment. To fund fire coverage that way. Um, Bloomfield Township has, uh, historically wanted to provide fire protection from Remus through the Wheatland Fire Department for the northern half of the township. Um, which despite having a, a longer response time, has a lower ISO rating, so it, it is a lesser. Qualified Department of the I S O for homeowner insurance, so. For most of our homeowners, the difference in that ISO rating from Wheatland to now to Sherman. Is more than what you're being assessed, so at least in my house it has that.
Me too.
Um. With that, we've had a handful of calls come in, you know, wanting to know if it's the renewal, is it something new? Um, we've explained to everybody, everyone's been cool with it, it's called, so we've not had any objections sent prior to the meeting.
Any questions? Okay. Portions open for public comment. Name and address for the record, please.
Terry Miller, twelve fifty-four Clubhouse Drive. I just wondered, um. Um, I don't, what's the status update on the dredging, I know they got a lot done.
Oh, we're, we're still, we're doing the resolution for the, uh, fire resolution, that's comes up.
When do I get the comment on that?
Public comment, so.
We have public comment on resolution.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Anybody? Okay. Seeing none, public comment is closed at this portion. Any other? Comments by the council? All right, public hearing's closed at seven eleven. Wait. A motion. I made.
I did it first. You have to be second.
Report.
Thank you.
Move, move are made by Shannon to accept resolution twenty twenty-five oh six, or excuse me, twenty twenty-five oh five, seconded by. Laraway.
Got it.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, roll call, please.
Joel Latte.
Yes.
Robert Laraway.
Yes.
Brent Peavy.
Yes.
Daryl Shannon, yes. Kerry Behringer, yes. Paul Cuny.
Yes.
Dave Torgerson.
Yes, motion carries unanimous. Ordinance twenty twenty-five oh two zoning code. The zoning quarter. I can't say it, code. Zoning quarter. Oh.
You wanna say.
Let me say it for you.
I was thinking of the wood that we saw. Okay. Public hearing is open at seven. Mr. Manager.
Your second of three public hearings tonight is for an ordinance that would update the zoning ordinance of the village. Uh, the village council has worked on this for the past several months in terms of different areas that you've looked at, kind of individually. This comes from the village planning commission, worked, worked on it for three or four months last year. And recommended it to the council. Uh, there was, um, two members of the planning commission who objected to one aspect of the, the recommendation, which was concerning sheds on vacant lots, which you guys have. Worked through for a couple of months. Um, but the highlights of, uh, this ordinance would prohibit timber harvesting in residential neighborhoods, if it's over an acre. Prohibit the creation of new private roads. Updates regulation for garden fences and snow fences. Updates a slew of accessory structure regulations, including the shed one. Uh, clarifies that barn dominiums comply with the foundational requirements of the zoning code. And updates the alternative energy regulations in our zoning ordinance, among some definitions and some other things, like, those are the main highlights. Uh, no comments, questions have been submitted to the office prior to the meeting for the hearing.
Okay. This portion of the meeting now is open for public comment on. This new resolution. Zoning court up, code update.
What is the, what is the, uh? Quick version of the, so, of the shed changes?
Well, it's not a real quick version.
Well, shorten it.
So the, what's in the ordinance would allow for sheds to be placed on vacant lots, and if they are under a half acre. I mean, limited to a hundred and twenty square feet. If it's being placed on a vacant lot, it has to meet a design standard that the planning commission is going to adopt in terms of like. Pre-designed or, um, you know, pattern book style, um, but. The intent is, you know, you've got a lot of people that have vacant waterfront lots right now. They're clearly trying to use their property, if they could put a, a small shed in a place that's inconspicuous on their property. That would help keep the place neat and tidy is.
Great idea.
Yep.
Any other public comment?
Yeah, Kim Fox, uh, six six one three was a little too late. Uh, I appreciate all the hard work that went into this and I hope you will pass and. Uh, with the, uh, shed, because I think it will only enhance and help the lake properties.
Okay. What else? Okay, public comment portion is closed. Oh, you had another one?
No, I just said I agree.
Hey, closed at seven fifteen. Comments or questions from the council? Any chance to look it over?
Yep. Or not in a while.
Okay. So, public hearing is closed, seven fifteen. Complete. Now we get to act on it, who's gonna make the motion? Motion made by Behringer to accept. Resolution twenty twenty-five oh two zoning court update. Seconded by PV. Further discussion. Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Robert Laraway.
Yes.
Brent Peavy.
Yes.
Carol Shannon, yes. Kerry Behringer, yes. Paul Cuny.
Yes.
Joel Latte.
Yes.
Dave Torgerson.
Yes, motion carries unanimous. And proposed ordinance twenty twenty-five oh three animal control code. Age. Public hearing is now open, seven sixteen. Mr. Manager.
Your third and final public hearing tonight is for proposed update to the village's animal control ordinance. Um, it does two things, it changes the term animal control officer to code enforcement officer. Uh, this was something that when we looked into. The legal definition of an animal control officer, there are things statutorily that that position would entail that. We don't do here at the village in terms of a hundred hours of training. That kind of stuff, uh, through the sheriff's department. Uh, cause we just can't do it. Um, so we've changed that to code enforcement officer. And then to address some, some recent issues that have, uh, surfaced in the village. We added a prohibited property and prohibited person clause, so if you've had three violations of our ordinance and been re, found responsible, so you've been ticketed. You went before magistrate, if you denied responsibility or you just admitted it. Within a, a certain window of time, we would prohibit that person or property from having animals for up to eighteen months, essentially, it, it's a way.
Three years, I thought.
I think it's eight, eight, within eighteen months.
Within eighteen.
Oh, within eighteen months, God, I'm sorry.
So. Um. That is, but, but a tool that we hope will give us more authority to take control over some animal control issues, we can pop up in the community in the last. Year or so with habitual problems that. You know, it gets only motivate people so far, so. Um, with that, we've had no calls, questions, concerns sent to the office before the meeting.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, public comment.
Is that, is that referring to like camping animals, does that mean dogs when they lose?
Yes.
Got it, good deal.
Any other public comment? Okay. Seeing none. A, a public hearing is closed. And let's go to, uh. Who's going to make the motion?
I will.
Motion made by Laraway.
What time is it?
Oh, I'm sorry, seven nineteen.
Thank you.
Motion made by Laraway to accept proposed ordinance twenty twenty-five oh three.
Yes, I know.
Seconded by Behringer. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Brent Peavy.
Yes.
Daryl Shannon, yes. Kerry Behringer, yes. Paul Cuny.
Yes.
Joel Latte.
Yes.
Robert Laraway.
Absolutely, yeah.
Dave Torgerson.
Yes. Motion carries. Now it's public comment.
Now I can answer.
It's not on the ordinance.
I think we made a lot of progress on the dredging this year. About how much we got left to do in this time period.
So the, the, the first project is done, which was Birch Bay. Um, so they, they got ninety-five hundred cubic yards, ninety-six hundred cubic yards out. Um, because we're doing pay as you go. We gotta wait for this year's millage money to come in on our summer taxes, all of that in the leftover proceeds from last year are being invested into the river project. So the river is gonna dredge, um, through hydraulic dredging, like eleven, twelve thousand cubic yards.
I think it's almost.
I think it's almost twelve. Um, that contract's been approved. Uh, with, uh, Savin Lake Services out of Hale, Michigan for three hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. Uh, he is looking to begin construction of the holding cell for the de-watering aspect because it's. Suction and pumping it to the place, um, in, I think, late June, early July, maybe July, yeah. With work beginning around August and having to be completed by October fifteenth, so that should hopefully get. All that area in front of Carmen Park up through the, the east side of the river, cause there's the island there. Cleaned up, up through Playa Park by October fifteenth is the goal, so. After that, the committee hasn't. Looked at a third project yet because they wanted to. Have one mechanic project under their belt and one hydraulic dredging under their belt, cause the first project we did with, you know, backhoes and, and that kind of stuff and. This one we're doing with boats and barges to kind of get their feel on which way works better and frozen towns beach approach to see where they go next. And if committee members. Wanna. Tell me I'm off base.
No, that's, that's pretty much it, go ahead, Brett.
Um, yeah, I was just in the committee's, uh, thoughts that we started with Birch Park, just cause that ramp was extremely shallow and it's getting washed in and then, uh. Part of the project this year, that's another boat launch that hasn't been used in.
Yeah.
Yeah, good point.
How many years, so we're gonna get that boat launch open, plus it's upstreaming, so if we. Put more silk down river, like, we're gonna clean it up later, right, so we start upstreaming, finish working where I'm down, so.
And we're gonna be able to bring back forty boat slips too.
Yeah, forty boat slips, another ramp.
Yeah.
You know.
Nice.
And it'll act as a silt trap too. Because it will be stretched down deep enough that the silt settle there.
The one thing the committee did, period of time, talk about is. We really don't know. How. Good, bad, that ramp is.
Right.
Because.
It's no one's seen it.
There's much mud right now.
Yeah.
You know, so, what the committee talked about is, you know, after this year, after we get it cleaned out, if that ramp does need to be addressed, that is something we could do.
Yep.
You know, in twenty twenty-six essentially, as part of the, the next phase, because, so it matches up what we did at Birch, so. Have three functioning launches back in the community would be huge.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, good job.
Any other public comment? Okay. Existing business, there is none.
Did anyone wash the boat on the new boat launch?
I've asked George repeatedly, he said, nobody's had anything bad to say, like, it's way deeper, it's way easier.
Um, I will tell you that it doesn't get deep fast.
Oh, yeah.
You gotta go a long way, so some cars won't live.
Oh.
There'll be water, so, other than that, it's good. Yeah.
Okay. New business. Resolution twenty twenty-five. Oh, six, M dot category app.
So the deadline to submit category B applications to M dot is June twelfth, which is before our June council meeting date. Um, so my request to you would be to either approve the resolution tonight, let me fill in the blanks until we get the numbers from Row. Or have a special meeting once I get the numbers from Row. Um, this is sort of the same project that we went after last year, um, this project would be a resurfacing. From Drew Road to Torcito on Queensway, we've also added Sevillah to it this year. And some of the differences from last year to this year. Last year, we had looked at doing, um, the micro fiber, right, process. Um, and that drove the cost way, way up, I mean, that was half the project cost right there. Uh, as an alternative, what we want to do this year to bring that cost down, but still address. The structural issue that we're seeing in the outside wheel path on each lane is we're gonna wedge it first, so we come in. Do a lot of, uh, an inch wedge there to, to cover up that distress. And then do an inch and a half on top of the remaining existing services in the wedge and then shoulder it out. We would also do four culvert replacements at Crown Point, Castle. Uh, Sevillah and Granada. So all of those, um, need to be extended, they're forty footers, we wanna go to sixty, add shoulders, so that's a bigger turn radius through there. And also add a little bit of a, a D cell turn-ish lane. Um, getting onto Sevillah from Queensway, if you're coming from the north. Uh, if you look at that, um, this isn't, this is a failed culvert, but. That, that intersection, that whole side is blown out completely, cause traffic's just cutting through there, and if you're going down Queensway. Um, as a stopgap right now, we're gonna cut out that seam. And, and just patch it ourselves, because it's kind of potholed out at that seam. Um, but we're thinking that the chip and fog project that we did in twenty-three. Um, that has enough elasticity still remaining and that, that can. Act as pretty similar to that Fiber Mat application that we were looking to do. So if we can keep that as a stress absorbing inner layer between the old pavement and what we do. We're optimistic that we're gonna be able to, to take care of that distress and we'll beef that up enough that. If we were to do any future dredging projects mechanically, where we're gonna be hauling. Tons of material out, we're gonna have a, a bigger beefier road to do that on, so. Um, that's the project in a nutshell. Um. Sent the request into Row. Um, I did all the basically preliminary quantities and estimates, um. I kind of have a, a ballpark idea of what it's gonna cost based on experience doing it, um, so I. I would think the end number's gonna be right around three hundred thousand. The category B project will cover up to fifty percent of eligible expenses. Um, so you'd be looking at, you know, a three hundred thousand dollar project with a hundred and fifty paid, paid for the states. Um, this is the same pro, program that we use for Clubhouse. Um, so that was a. Two hundred and sixty, seventy thousand dollar project, when all said and done, that we got a hundred and thirty thousand of that covered for by M dot. To do all the way down. If that doesn't go through. Um, the other option I would look at in the budget would be for a, a large crack ceiling project on our major streets. Um. Try and hold on to those a little bit longer.
Yeah, so this is for the grant application.
This is for the grant.
Just to see whether or not they go.
Yeah.
Okay. Cause they had to write half of the, actually more than half, don't they?
It's half.
At least fifty percent, yeah. Okay, and you need from us what?
I need you to either adopt the resolution tonight or say you wanna have a special meeting.
I trust him. I do too. And I don't wanna miss out, so let's not get her done tonight. Not that I'm scared of an extra meeting, but he's pretty good at all these grants and stuff.
Definitely.
I agree.
Don't say it to me.
Yeah, we're just gonna whisper it, right?
All right.
Okay.
So, Cheryl entertained a motion. To accept resolution twenty twenty-five twenty oh six, M dot category application.
I'm in.
Motion made by Cuny.
There you go.
Seconded by Laraway. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Daryl Shannon, yes. Kerry Behringer.
Yes.
Paul Cuny.
Yes.
Joel Latte.
Yes.
Robert Laraway.
Yes.
Brent Peavy.
Yes.
Dave Torgerson.
Yes, motion carries unanimous. Okay, review of bids. Tractor bids.
The accepted bids until last Friday, um, at four o'clock. Uh, to replace our two thousand and seven New Holland tractor. A machine that has twenty-three hundred hours on it, give or take. Um, what we have seen as we have. Grown in operations and size and scope is that. An open cab machine that is thirty horsepower. Is not an efficient way for us to move digits or shoulders, um, we need a, a machine that's got a, the ability to farther reach into that shoulder. And we need something a little bit safer for our operator, um, so we put money in the budget. To replace that machine with, um. We were targeting forty-five to sixty horsepower machines, quite frankly, um. The low unit is a TYM. Which is a Korean company manufactured in Rome, Georgia. Uh, forty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars for a fifty-eight horsepower. Engine for a PTO. Uh, the next option is Bobcat from Ellen's, which is in Beal City. A new Holland from Beal City. Two from Breckenridge, the Coyote, uh, Coyote in the Case IH. Then we're back to Beal City for the Boomer fifty, and then we're in Rosebush for the Hudson John Deere. Um, and looking at all of these, um. You know, there are, there are two competing things, I think you always say when you look at tractor. If you're between two, go with the bigger horsepower. And your tractor's only as good as your service person. You know, um. The TYM doesn't scare me, but the, doesn't have near certain. You know, um, the TYM doesn't scare me, but the doesn't have a near service option. You're talking Black and you're talking New Waygo, um. It appeals to me in the fact that it has a more old school diesel engine, it's not the the single line, straight line.
Turbo, like the one, John Deere's a turbo.
It's a turbo, that is a turbo.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, that is a turbo and the forty fifty-two R is a turbo. Um, I know that doesn't scare me a ton, but um. You know, if we weren't going to go with that, I would recommend either the new Holland Boomer fifty or the John Deere forty-four four R. Um, I think, I think Brett has probably the most experience in this area and refer to him at that point.
I like the John Deere just for resale value. I mean, I never had a problem selling one when I read about it. I mean, I've never had a problem with them. Um, that said, I also have a new Holland Skid steer. I ran into some problems with them, but I mean, like you said, working with Allen's and Beal City is pretty good. Um, Rosebush is great too at Hudson's.
Yeah.
Um, I've known the guy that works on the small tractors there for a long time. He's great. You you pay a little bit more, but I mean, people pay extra money for a John Deere, like everybody, you know. No one's really offended by a John Deere that I know of, you know, like they're a good tractor, you pay a little bit more for it, but you get it back when you go to sell it. That's been my experience, you know, if you you know, if we could guarantee that we were going to run this tractor from brand new till it was pretty much dead. You know, I would say you could go with the cheaper option, but you know, what if our our needs as a village change and we need to get rid of that tractor and upgrade or do something else, you know, we want to be not buried in a tractor where it's, you know, we've only had it for five years and it's not even worth half the money.
Dependability factor is a few bucks too.
What's that?
The dependability factor says it's a few bucks too. And if it's not breaking down all the time, you're not paying for the service from your parents.
None of my John Deeres ever broke down. Happened tomorrow, probably.
And you've been running them, so I know they had to be good.
Yeah. Yeah, I have a thirty forty-six R John Deere, which is probably it's a click lower than what you're looking at, but it's got a turbo on it, so it has slightly more horsepower, but it's the thirty series and I bought it with like a hundred hours and we have over seven hundred on it now. We use it all the time.
Do you think it's it's worth the extra twenty-five hundred bucks to go up to the the bigger horsepower John Deere?
I don't think so, no. So like, I mean, little things like PTO horsepower, all the tractors are pretty efficient, like my little twenty-five horse tractor will run my big rototiller just fine. Like it turns it pretty good.
The Deers are, the the TYM is the heaviest of of that group. I think the Deers are the next heaviest, which you know, helps you with that that ability to have an implement on the back end where you you don't have a lighter tractor too, you know. That has the biggest uh PTO lifting capability. You know, the research I did Bob Bobcats, they they just don't have the reliability, I think that I could recommend that to you. A lot of electrical comments I see. And we've done, we do business with both Hudson and Allen's. Our backhoe is a John Deere, it's a three three ten J. Um, we get service typically through AIS, they come up and do the manual maintenance on it, but we've done parts and stuff like that. Our plows, our boss, which is service from Hudson, um. The current tractor is a new Holland, so we've used Allen's, used to be Tillman's. Um, I I will say when it converted from Tillman's to Allen's, it it did go down in my opinion, but it has since come back. It was you know, a little adjustment period there, but the last few times we use it, they've been, they've been perfectly fine.
About when we add things to it like a mower, is a is a John Deere mates only with the John Deere?
No, 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 three, the PTOs are universal.
Okay, the only difference on that is the John Deere has its own quick attach system for the plant.
For yeah, for buckets, they're different.
Yeah, so which which is.
Skid steer, you have to buy a, which.
Yeah, because we have a pallet fork, skid steer attachment that we use right now and a bucket attachment, so. The deer does have that difference, but.
Yeah. Tim, will we have to buy a new bucket or?
Which has got the loader and we asked for a grapple as well.
Okay.
With the the print, the the idea being we want to use this also for storm cleanup.
Right.
So one of the things that we're we're seeing is, you know, a lot of trees and stuff that when they come down, we have a dump trailer, but you got to load it into that dump trailer. You know, this will help cut that down a ton and also managing that pile back behind the DPW building, having something more than just a big thing to push it, if we can pick it up and move it, that's going to be a more efficient way to manage that property back there.
Well, I'm complete in favor of either the Boomer fifty or the John Deere forty-four hour.
Do you think it's worth more having the more horsepower or not? Seven and a half more horsepower? I mean. I'm just asking.
Probably not. I mean, for our ditches, I mean, it's not going to be that thick of grass. You know, it's like you're going to be cutting brush.
And ours is thirty now anyway, right?
Yeah, right now the more the attachment that we have is a is like a thirty inch, so that's part of the issue is our tractor's not big enough to run something bigger, so we're making our two passes super slow in, since it's not a a cab system, you're limited in how long you can really keep that operator out there in June, July and August during the day. Like you've got to find other things to do and not just bake them all day long.
Well, and ground bees.
And ground bees.
Ground bees real fast.
Good point.
Yeah, Brad was pointing out too, like, you know, with this type of machine, we can also supplement some of that backhoe work that we do now with winter and cleanup and corners and that kind of stuff, um.
Yeah, you can put a snow pusher on them, like an eight foot snow pusher and like clean up corners.
Issue is getting it fixed.
Uh, the TYM, I don't know anything about them. I've only seen one run. I mean, the price is outstanding.
Yeah.
Um, I saw, I watched a YouTube video, you know, about them that they seem like a good tractor, but I don't know. In in ten years, what if they don't even sell them in, you know, the United States anymore, you know, where then we have something that you can't really even sell. You know, John Deere's been around a long time. I promise you in ten years, you can still sell John Deere if you need to.
That's a really good point, I think.
Like, well, we're just going by that. I mean, same as you said, little case and.
Yeah, yeah, New Holland, yeah, right. But that was my two cents on, you know, some of the the cheaper tractors that.
Oh, yeah, no, I totally agree with the the, you know, TYM units, so.
I mean, if everybody wanted to get behind the TYM, I mean, I would.
Oh, my husband said that that's a good machine and the service, it's not difficult. They were looking at becoming a uh service provider.
Right, but you have to drive there to get, you have to load it up and drive it and that'll take it off a day.
If you have warranty work, I mean.
Yeah. That's what I'm talking about, service. Your warranty is only as good as the service department.
Personally, I'm not a tractor guy, but I mean, looking at the ones that we're talking about, I think the New Way fifty or the the four forty-four or the forty forty-four are probably the you know, most bang for buck type scenario. You know, well, as I don't know as far as longevity and then resale value, uh I do know New Holland's been around a lot, you know, for a long while and, you know, and but not knowing that, I mean, you know, that offers a fifty horse, which, you know, and forty-three on the PTO would I know aren't significant, but that's why we're upgrading so much. I mean, that's going to figure that horsepower.
The only, the only devil's advocate I would throw shade at the John Deere is our backhoe is a John Deere already. And if we go to this as a John Deere, and let's say there's a some type of strike or labor dispute at John Deere and there is a part issue, are we out of commission now doubly as opposed to one? Or like here at the office, our internet is through Charter Stock and at DPW, it's homeworks. We we have that diversification for a reason. Is there value in going with New Holland on one and John Deere on the other, just so if there is some type of manufacturing issue with one company, you're not out of luck on boat machines.
I I don't know that that affects parts. Uh, not for, you know, shorter duration, strike scenarios and stuff like that, because less typically the manufacturing that you'll see issues with as far as that getting the actual.
Yeah.
You know, new tractors. Parts are like a totally different market, you know, um.
I don't know, are John Deere parts specific?
Oh, they are, but what I'm saying is there are stockpiles of parts in in warehouses for the supply houses um, that are that are intended on being built into a tractor, you know.
Um. Let's go take one awful lot.
Well, yeah, you know, if it was a long term thing, then yeah, those those parts.
Screwdriver and wrench, it'll be our part.
I guess if we're looking between just those two.
Yeah.
I'll refer to.
Yeah.
Brad, if if he knows more about that stuff, then maybe.
No, you said Brad.
Thank you.
I think.
And I didn't catch that, Carol. Trying to get me.
I was trying to whisper it.
Like Bob's leaning towards John Deere is what he said.
I own a John Deere, I like it.
What do you think, Paul?
I I'll I'll refer to him because I have no preference over the two. I think they're both good machines.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm going to defer to the more expert person.
Yeah, what uh what brand of uh offset mower, have you pinpointed that?
No.
No?
I was looking at Titan, but there's also that um Iron Craft look pretty decent too.
I was just curious, like what what they call for as far as like horsepower specs.
Yeah. All of these, when I specked out against the the Titan foil mower, this was the size range that was going to accommodate, so.
Sixty horse or something.
Yeah, I put in there, you know, the 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 models that we've looked at were the the Bull Rays and the Series Four and the CTs from the Bobcat to to have come up with these specs, so um. It has the, it has the thirty-two PTO horsepower, which is what you need to run that size foil mower. It certainly has lifting capacity on the rear end it by far. It's the the outshines New Holland in that. You know, Holland can lift more on the front end, but that's not, I think, the focus of our machine, quite frankly. Uh, because, you know, tree branches don't weigh a whole lot when they're full of leaves, you know.
Yeah. Much your pleasure, folks.
I think Brent should just decide.
I think he should tell. I get the John Deere, but also.
The forty, the forty forty-four?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and that's enough. Why not?
I I mean, I'm sure you could having a test drive with Hudson, I'm sure like, I don't know if you you ran it and it just didn't run the the offset mower. I don't know if they let you demo one.
What's that?
Once you get the mower, if they let you demo the forty forty-four, see how it ran that thing like PTO horsepower wise.
I think it'd be fine.
Yeah, I I mean.
I'm not worried about that.
I've never hooked anything to mine that was like, man, I need more PTO horsepower.
I just wonder why it's so low compared to all the others. Thirty-two versus thirty-nine, thirty-eight, I guess it's a thirty-three in Kubota. Right, and that's where I was saying the the Boomer fifty, you know, offers higher horsepower and uh on the front end and the engine and PTO and it's less money. Um, you know, I have John Deere, I like John Deere too, but I'm not talking about spending my money here. I'm thinking what's the most bang for our for for our constituents' buck, uh, if if you will, you know. You know, but there again, like I said upfront, I don't know much about tractors.
And like, we we all have our biases. I don't like John Deere.
Yeah.
Like, I'm I'm perfectly fine if we get one, but like, I think you pay a lot for green paint, I I think. I I think you're paying more for green paint than you are for the machine.
Right, so we can pay. Green and still be uh.
A yellow duct tape.
There you go, but they're they're perfectly good equipment and made in the United States, you know.
You know, I'm just on paper, like you said, you know, the the information and knowledge I have, I mean, I just think the the New Holland, the Boomer fifty, uh, you know, it saves a few thousand dollars and it offers more, uh, you know. More horsepower and now what were you saying? Well, the 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 lift weight on the rear end was lower on.
John Deere has the the bigger capacity on the rear end. It it has the best lifting capacity on the back end by far. And a lot of it comes, it's a heavier machine.
Yeah.
You know, it's it's heavier and from a design standpoint, one of the the nice things on the deer honestly is that the steering components aren't put right underneath on the front, so if you're you're brush cutting with it and a autumn olive bush pops up, it's not going to rip up your your steering fluid and crap like that underneath your steering gear, so. Um.
Yeah, I'm not opposed either.
Yeah, I'm not opposed.
Budget aspect, if if there's reasons that one is better than the other, I I do like what you're saying though, the the uh, you know, the resale value.
That's my only.
Looking down the road and.
That's just my, I'm finally biased, you do pay.
That should absorb the the couple thousand dollar price difference, uh, according to theory, I mean, you know.
Don't like what you saw in five years.
Yeah, Brett's lying, he loves them. All right, so we have to make a decision. What are we going to go for? Bob, you like the deer? That Carrie? You like what?
I was thinking the Boomer fifty, but.
Fifty?
I'm fine with either.
Brent's a deer. Um, I I truly am finally here. Uh, Brent, who knows more about tractors, recommends the John Deere, so I mean, I'll I'll support that, but.
I'm not the person.
Looks like the deer.
Let's get a Kubota and just settle.
Push more.
That's right.
Make, are you going to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept a bid for the forty forty-four R.
Okay, seconded, motion made by PB, seconded by Cuny for the John Deere forty forty-four R. Further discussion? Okay, roll call.
Jerry Behringer.
Yeah.
Paul Cuny?
Yes.
Joe Latte.
Yes.
Robert Larraway.
Yes.
Brent PB?
Yes.
Carol Shannon?
Yes.
Dave Turgeson.
Okay, yes. So the deer it is.
We're all going to get our picture in.
Say that.
You can do pay rides in the fall.
Every, you know.
We charge a small fee, we could recoup some of our funds.
There we go.
Okay, budget amendments.
Well, that just needs to refer to finance and it kind of segues into the introduction of the the budget, which is the next item. Um, because the items in the budget reflect the proposed amendments from this item, so.
Okay.
We're good with that. I can just start on the budget discussion.
So we go right to capital improvement plan.
We we don't have to approve this.
No, I guess refer to finance, because most of that in the budget come out of finance.
Okay.
Um, so in your your package, you you have the draft budget and CIP for twenty-five twenty-six. Uh, for our capital improvement plan in twenty-five twenty-six, the highlights include uh, local street maintenance study. We were hoping to do that in the twenty-four twenty-five year. Um, we didn't get that prepared in time and then we had a a street issue on Carmen that we're going to have to do a patch job on, so that's going to even to that contractual service light item to the point where I said, let's, let's trim that number back in the twenty-four twenty-five budget and we'll just look at doing this project, which is essentially, we're going to look at, these are the conditions of our local streets. These are the difference maintenance options that we can come up with. Uh, Row or Lisa Vanderbeek or whoever, you know, we would like you to peer review this and give give your thoughts and recommendations on which one of these maintenance options really is the most bang for the buck in terms of what we can do on our local streets, because our local streets are where we have the maintenance need and we have absolutely zero money to do anything of significance. We have eighteen and a half miles of roads and we get a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars a year from the state to maintain that, which includes plowing and mowing and painting and all those kind of fun things, so. Uh, we have the category B project in there, um, and as an alternative, we would look at doing a large crack ceiling project. With the river restoration project, proposing to do two streetlights, Queensway and Sevillah and Dequessa and Velado. Uh, as we look at kind of things that we can do to maybe act as a deterrent, act as a safety improvement in a world where we don't have a sheriff's department. Um, adding a few streetlights are probably a good idea in my opinion, especially in places where you have these bottlenecks where people have to exit and enter from from neighborhoods. If you can illuminate those, it may deter some type of conspicuous activities is kind of. If you can illuminate those, it may deter some type of conspicuous activities is kind of the solid process. And the radar sign that we have up right now on clubhouse that we can move around. Has been very well received. I'd look at getting another one of those. We can, um, get that out about in the community in a couple of different locations. With all that being said. Um, here's what the main three look like. So we have major str- or general fund, major street, local street. I'm trying to move the headers in from out by. It looks a lot worse than it is. Um. And here's why it, it's like this. It's because we're paying for. A police contract without a millage to support that, which is in the budget. Fifty thousand for this year and the following year. And then you have the big, uh, capital improvement project on Queensway with the grant. Um, and the local street's pretty self-explanatory, the. The twenty-six, twenty-seventh is cuz we're replacing a truck, which is a fifty fifty out of the streets. You take out the policing. And you take out the road project. And it looks like that. And I wanted to illustrate it this way to show that. It isn't a structural issue that we are currently facing. We're, we're, we're spending savings that we have because. We are providing services, so we are, we are going to be providing that public safety service until. We come up with a, a revenue stream that we can present to our community, whether that's. Um, revenue that we could capture through. Cityhood and reverting that one mill they paid to the township to the village and funding that service that way. Or if we go back to our community and say, we need, we need you to support a village like you did in twenty twenty-two to fund this service. Um, and also if we cut out the, the grant projects where we're paying half of that. You know, your, your sixty thousand almost in the positive for your major street, so. Um. Our fund balance history over time, blue is general fund, orange is major street, gray is local street. Uh, so we, we have his, has a history of building that fund balance up over time. Specifically for these type of times where we wanna provide a service that. You know, we, we need to, that we can't just fund right, right away. So we built that fund balance up for major streets. You can see the, the first big dip was the El Camino project. We built it back up. Then we did, you know, thirty, we did Queensway, we did clubhouse, so. We've managed that fund in a way so we can do the bigger projects, so we can hopefully see that economy of savings. One thing that can help us too long term. Is overall, our major streets are in pretty decent condition. Um, after this Queensway project, the, the kind of three problem child that haven't been talked to from their parents. Bonanza. The remainder of clubhouse where Mr. Miller lives, that's still original payment from two thousand and three. And then the section of Bundy where I live is an overlay from two thousand and six, I wanna say. Um, thankfully, those don't have a traffic fine where they're experiencing where if the rate the other sections are. Um, but that would be the next ten, three projects that we would go after is some type of surface treatment there. Um, and, and once you get set there, you should have a few years where you could potentially divert. The funding for your major streets to local streets in a, in a degree, so. I mean, we get, um. Act fifty-one money from the state of Michigan, which is your gas tax revenue. Uh, we get three hundred and sixty-ish thousand, I wanna say, for major streets. We have seven and a half, eight miles left up my head. Um. We have an adopted asset management plan that MDOT has accepted. Which allows you, if you have that adopted asset management plan, you can transfer. Up to a hundred percent of your major street revenue to your local street fund in any year. So, that, that gives it a little bit more. Long-term options, hopefully. Um, in terms of things we should look at local streetwise down the road. Um, and then your general fund. Um, you know, we, we have a pretty healthy general fund balance. Your orders tell you that every year, um. You know, so I'm, I'm not, not too worried about a couple of years where we, we fund policing this way, um.
What's important to note too, that the policing, we, we gave back that third of a mil.
Yeah, so the voters approved that for three years.
We only used one year.
Right.
You know.
And so they haven't, we haven't used any money.
No, we, we collected thirty-six thousand and spent fifty-six thousand, you know. Is, is how that worked out.
Yeah.
But again. That was the responsible thing to do. This board one hundred percent did the right thing. You could not, in good conscience. Put a millage on our residents' taxes last July for a service you didn't know if it's gonna be there in December or not, because the county was. You know.
The county was the county.
County was the county, you know. Yeah. So we, we prioritize.
And now specifically for the spare, the way it was written.
Yeah.
In the millage was for the sheriff department. That's why we can't use it for the city, which we have to make.
Yeah.
Everyone understanding that.
Right. That's what I've got for you guys.
Okay. Any questions? So you're gonna put that all together then?
Yeah, we just need to get a finance committee meeting scheduled. For the charter is the clerk, the treasurer and our president day.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Or should for public comment again? Miller?
Well, the new deer tractor and offset mower make it possible to mow in front of South Park, the ditch.
If we can reach from the edge of the shoulder, yeah.
That'd be nice to have that, uh, mow once in a while.
How far does the association come out to mow?
What's that?
How far does the association mow? Out at South Park?
No. Yeah, it's kind of a cooperative effort, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean. They're the ones that have always mowed that.
Right.
But if we can reach it better, yeah.
Well, we can do it.
Yeah, cuz if, if we have. Do it at this angle. Yeah, right, that's gonna be a lot easier for us, so.
That'd be a good question for them.
Should I ask George?
Pardon me?
Should I ask George then?
Yeah, you can ask George.
What, are they not doing it now? I mean.
I don't know, I don't know, that's.
They're not going in.
Okay.
When you ask, you could ask him why they're not mowing it.
He doesn't like to discuss it.
Oh, I, I imagine.
You're a member, right?
Yes.
Then you expected him to talk to you.
I haven't talked to him, but I promised this other person I would.
Yeah, if we can get, get a mower down in that angle.
Well. Yeah.
Okay. You think that's why he isn't doing it cuz of the age?
That'd be the only thing I could think of is that, they, their mowers are either a belly or off the back.
Right.
And if that ditch is at this type of angle, that's not supposed to take for them to do, so. And that's, that's one of the issues that we have is. You know, the, we got that offset to run our current tractor, so we could do that type of thing, but we can only have, it's only thirty inches, so.
Right.
But if we can double that.
It'll definitely probably.
Yeah.
Any further public comment? Okay, council comments? Any? Announcements? So we have to set up a finance meeting.
Yep.
And the next one is June, the next council meeting is June.
Sixteenth and I'm not here. Seventeenth.
Carol, there's no excuse. I'm always here.
I know. You listen, that's good.
All right, um, and, and, and.